Well, we'll go ahead and get going here because I know there's a few want to get done. First of all, we'll start with a prayer which will begin by Councilman Welton and then the pledge will be led by Councilman Phillips.
Father Nevin, as we come before you this evening, we're thankful to gather here as members of this wonderful community and to discuss the prayers of our city and how to make it a wonderful place for everyone involved. We're thankful, Father, for a free country and a government in which we can have open discussions and we pray that those will be productive and beneficial. We pray that thy Spirit will be with us and we can make good choices. Please bless the people of Payson to have happiness and safety in their homes and that we can prosper. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
The audience, please rise and complete the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor can amend the agenda, a CC split.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. First thing on the agenda, we'll start with the consent agenda. Uh, Councilman Hardy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and approve the consent agenda, which is the City Council Minutes from our last council.
Okay, we've got a motion to pass the approval of the August 3rd Council Minutes. We've got a motion by Councilman Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, that carries. Next thing, I'd like to amend the agenda and go down to the hope of office. He looks like he's gonna come in jail there, so. He likes to get out early, so we're gonna, we'll turn it over to him to install our new officer.
Thank you. Officer Gilli, do you want to drop that? Anybody brought their cameras for a picture? Come right here on the front. I am ready to write my. I spend your killing.
I spend your killing.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
And I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I just gotta know if you made your first arrest yet.
I've made four.
Last time I talked to him, he just got taste and he hadn't made an arrest yet, so we're doing good. Well, we appreciate all of our officers and welcome him on our, on our team, so it's gonna be a lot of fun, so appreciate all your tougher man.
You by Mary. I'm gonna be down with the Payson Community Theater's Board of Trustees. The Payson Community Show and Awards opens next week on Thursday night, goes Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then the weekend at the celebration also Thursday, Friday, two shows on Saturday close on Labor Day. May we invite the members of the City Council, bring partners, become as our guests to whatever performance meets your personal schedule. Each evening on the evening performances at seven and the afternoon matinee on Saturday of the Labor Day celebration plus on Labor Day itself next at three o'clock. And I'll be out front with the locks office taking care of the money, so. Love to have you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first thing on the, well, the next thing on the agenda is the public forum. If anybody in the audience would like to come up and talk to the Council Mayor, you can go up to the microphone. Over here and state your name.
Happy New Year. Great feeling. My name is Larry Gomes. We've lived in Payson for about ten years. And we live on Fifth West. And Seventh South on the corner there. And it's a really interesting place to live. We've got two schools in my direction and two screwed up, two schools on Fifth West on the, just right across the way here and then one on Fifth West, between the fourth and Fifth South. And suddenly you may have noticed I didn't stand up, I probably stood up and I didn't put my hand over my heart and pledge. I've been places and done things that, that Christ is my Lord, I can't touch the ends of the fire. Seems a conflict. Part of that, why I'm here is when I was a Marine Corps in sunny Southeast Asia, as I like to call it. I flew as a gunner in a CH-46 helicopter. And I followed in order one day. And some people got killed. And it was from the rounds that I fired from my fifty caliber machine gun. I did not know they were there, but I saw them after. And it has left a mark on me that will never, ever, ever go away. Because it was a young woman and her little child. And I can imagine that day as children, them running from the hellacious fires of CH-46 helicopter with the two fifty caliber machine guns blazing. I can feel the terror that they must have felt, or I can't feel it, but anyways. All I have to say, I'm serious about what I'm saying. Living on Fifth South and those two schools, and we know quite a few of the children had to walk down that road during school and in play. And that road is a racetrack. There are no speed limit signs that I've seen in many times I've driven down that road. And some people use it as a drag strip. And then with the hill there, Dead Man's Hill, as it's called, everybody who wonders about their male, male, uh. The hill man has to drive in a big truck. We get big, big, big construction trucks and steam shovels and all types of garbage going up and down that hill. Well, and my whole point is I fear for the children. And then the other innocent person might get killed by some idiot. And I'm pretty sure for real again. And I plead with you, put up, put, I've noticed this house, I'm just amazed I got put up on Third South or wherever the heck it is. But speed limit signs, it, it would not hurt on that street to have two speed limit signs, one on the south as you enter on to the dragway at Eight South and one up at the front in both directions, so people know what the speed limit is. And then have it enforced. At night, I've noticed here recently, there's some idiot that goes down the road from south to north. And that person has to be going seventy, eighty miles an hour just to fly past our house. And when you've got somebody like me come plead the case before you for speed limit signs and enforcement. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes if you did not enforce the speed limit and some, especially a child gets killed or remained. If that happens, it's not gonna be my fault. I'm standing here running my mouth, not particularly comfortable doing it, but. It's really something that needs to be done. And as for a cost, if you enforce it, you can ten times your money back in probably a very short period of time. So I don't think economics is a problem. But I plead with you, please fix the problem because it is a serious problem that is a racetrack. And on Dead Man's Hill before that becomes a reality, if it hasn't already, if there's some way you can put at the bottom and at the top, no trucks, no commercial trucks. Because people go up and down that hill and they, they're not here for any reason. They'll turn left, come down the hill, turn left and go south and get on Eighth South and go up, they're just there playing. And with our house being at the bottom. But please, please put some speed limit signs up enough so there's no doubt of people's feeling. And please enforce it and you can make your money.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to?
On that side of town, we addressed this about two months ago, and there's a plan in place, sir. There's a plan in place, sir, and we're slowly putting stop signs in that neighborhood already. We addressed it a couple of months ago, right, Chief Bishop? So it's, it's in place and we know about it and we're working on it. We've got one street done and they're, Ken Fowden and his crew are getting those stop signs in your neighborhood as we speak. We haven't looked at that yet, but there will be traffic controls on every corner, I believe. We're pretty close to more, more than we have right now, so we're working on it.
Nobody knows what a speed limit is. It's not possible to have them anywhere. I try to drive reasonably high, I have people trying to hit my trucks all the time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have anybody else who would like to address the Mayor and Council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public forum and we'll have staff reports.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to report a couple of things. I told the Salem City, they made me tell them, so they thanked you guys because we loaned them a couple carts for the parade. And so they said, make sure you tell the City Council and Mayor, thank you for letting us do that. They also held their golf tournament at our place last Friday. They had about a hundred and forty players, so that was nice. And on the golf thing, we have three or four real big events coming up. Kamatu, which is out in North Salt Lake, they, they're bringing down a hundred and sixty players. And they choose two, too many to the state, and so this is the second year we've done it, so that's a, that's a great, great tournament to have.
You should tell them to bring some jobs in the middle of the dress this far.
That's right. They, well, they bring all their big, heavy equipment, park it all over and they, they don't have problems.
They would, they can't afford me to still district taxes.
Uh, but anyway, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that you guys knew that Salem really thanked our cooperation with the, on the cart, so thank you. And I'm gonna call Sarah out and I, I want her to say something tonight because I haven't heard from her, you know, this whole time. And since this is the last council meeting, I would like to invite her up to the mic and say a couple words.
There was a whole smorgasbord of things, ideas going through her head. You know, I don't know if I'd have had enough, whatever, helps to do that.
No, I just wanna say thanks. You guys have been wonderful to work with and it's been awesome.
We're gonna miss ya.
Yes, we are.
I'll get Tracy safely out of this car after. I would like to extend my appreciation to Sarah. She's been great to work with and we're definitely gonna miss her, so. This speeding problem that gentlemen was talking about, we'll push the next patrol there and see if we can make up that a little bit. The speed limit signs, I don't know if they're there or not, to be honest with you, it is a pretty much standard. It's twenty-five miles an hour. It's long, so it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory.
We've, we've been putting a lot more of them, tough ones down that area, haven't we?
Yeah, Ken's got the one street done and I think there's kind of another one that has time, but it's always been very, very busy this year, so.
You could just do that, you know, the dialer that we send out everybody, you can send it out on their cell phone, but social media, they get it.
Yeah. Just a reminder, school starts on Tuesday, I believe, so I heard your assistance and that to pay a little extra attention in the next couple of weeks to tell our kids start getting used to the habits that they've maybe forgotten over the, over the summertime. As far as Police Department goes, in the last two weeks, we've had six hundred and sixty-six calls for service, sixty-two arrests, a hundred and thirty-five offenses, a hundred and fifty-seven vacations, and resulted in two hundred and twenty-one violations, a hundred and ninety-seven traffic stops, and fourteen traffic accidents. I'd also like to thank the warm-up for Officer Gilley, I believe he's gonna be, he's great addition to our department and he was good enough to get tasered within twenty days of working here, so it was, it was permanent, so.
Mine's gonna be free.
On purpose, yes.
Uh, Mayor and Council, just a couple of quick updates. Brent and I had a meeting with Highline yesterday and worked out our billing and exactly how much water we have, so we, we have three thousand fifty-eight point six four acre feet of water, so we should be fine to make it the rest of the year. Right now, we're, we're taking about twelve CFS out of the canal to keep up with the lakes being closed. And we, that should get us all the way through the rest of September, the end of September, so. Brent reached out to them today and they were still doing more testing. The numbers are down some, but they're not down enough that they would let us reopen them, so.
It's not bad, they probably, does it keep some light pulling again?
Yeah. Yeah, and we're making it, so it's not horrible in that regard, it's just we have no option to use the water right now. But, but that's kinda where we're at. We've used about three hundred and fifteen million gallons of PI water so far this season, so just gotta give you how much that is, it's quite a bit, but. Um, Ken's guys have obviously done a great job. If you haven't seen Utah Avenue yet, that looks great and they're about done with, you know, the Hundred South, so that should be paved next week, so.
And, Third East?
Yeah.
Buses come out? Check that road out.
And Sixth, Sixth East has started, so if you wanna go yell at the contractor, we hope for you to do that.
I noticed some signs up that I was questioning where they were putting, they had SCP or something like that. It wasn't Central Bank, I don't like Central Banks.
And just aside, I won't miss Sarah when she's gone.
What is it you, when you get hacked off, all your funding, you'll miss her.
I know where she lives. Just wanted to give a brief report on the U.S. opinions this month. They held a summer conference up at Midway. And it was very interesting, they talked about climate change in the Columbia and Colorado River range. Got some updates on what's going on with the battery storage systems. What was interesting, they said that you can take sixty Tesla cars, and then after you plug them in your grid, fully charged, it would give you fifty megawatts capacity. Only downside is it's only good for twenty-five minutes, so.
They're making some, but it's still gonna be a long ways to go.
Talked about how the grid is changing from a one-way to a two bidirectional because of distributed generation. And, and then I had a guy talking about water conservation and he said that it takes four hundred and sixty gallons to make hamburger by time you grow up the lettuce, cabbages, cow's and all that. And it takes sixteen hundred gallons to make a pair of blue-bite cotton jeans. Because of cold water, it takes more water, then they spray water on it to help it hotter and cleaner. It's very interesting facts. Also had a member of the Sierra Club do a presentation and their goal is to have the electric grid fully decarbonized by the year twenty to fifty. And it was very interesting to see their structure. Each of their, I would call them clubs or units, are all independent, yet they still put out any Sierra Club things. So like in California, there are thirteen Sierra Clubs, but each one has their own thing that they go after, whatever they feel like. And so there's not a lot of science behind things. They talk a lot of things, there's another environment, this is stuff behind them that kind of put them in place as far as nuclear and sort of.
So they're talking nuclear, because that's, what other options do we have?
There are no other options. And so they talked a lot about the French model that they're using over in France, a lot of nuclear, a little bit of solar, man, and gas. So maybe put gas, you know, a little bit of solar and wind to take care of the whole grid.
What happens, I seen an article in the paper yesterday about Lake Neat, they figure like in two thousand eighteen, it's gonna be pretty much, I don't know, so what happens to their hydro generation? It just goes away?
It goes away.
I mean, when it gets so low they can't produce anything?
Yeah, yeah, they just go away. They are doing some work in San Joaquin Valley in California on water. We can do some water, they're putting in some, some tests over. Furnaces basically, heat water and then desolidization. So in the valley, so they can be used, but there's a lot of, they can't use it, it's gonna be some holding ponds and just sits there, so they're open to use that. So a lot of the new advances. If you have any further questions, I'd be glad to talk with you a little more in depth, but it talked about all the states that, how we go to decarbonation and Utah's in the middle, but we have the highest cost to go decarbon. And, but they, the federal, the feds basically feel that that's okay because our rates are low enough and we can withstand being higher. That's their, that's their perspective. And I just had a little thought by your thing on load factor. Basically, this is just an efficiency, how efficient you're using your power resources within the month. The reason why I did that, because today Payson was presenting basically the gold medal of the contest U.S. been holding over the, the past several months on load factor. And Payson was the eleventh seed and ended up number one, the highest load factor of the other cities within the, in the U.S. group.
So what is that for, like switching out to LED and stuff?
Uh, just, yeah, we're maximizing our, our capacity and using more energy within that capacity, so we're filling that pipe a little more and a little more efficient, so. Anyway, just wanted to show that with you. I love those kind of kudos. And then last, I just wanted to remind you of the carbon-free project update. It's September thirteenth, it's up in Salt Lake, it'll be a full update of where the technology is and everything you wanna know about small modular gas. The discale models, so I highly encourage you to look at sitting inside at the date of the thirteenth and, you know, go from eight to four, but there'll be a lot of great information. We're getting close to the crossroads, we're gonna make a choice whether we want to go with the project or not. And so I need more information, you as council have a better choice that you can make, so if you can look at that.
Who's doing the small reactor up in Idaho from Utah?
U.A.S.
U.A.S. is doing that?
We are, yeah, we're a part of that. They currently have, uh, they've added a lot of members into U.A.S. just for that project. They're up about three hundred megawatts as, as U.A.S. right now. That's a six hundred megawatt project, so a lot of interest. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council and public. I just wanted to update on our assault force that started and you're getting going. We just had gymnastics start this week as well as ball cheerleading, competitions here. Football, as you know, has been practicing, breaking, so we'll start shortly with that. And then our youth soccer program is starting next week as well. We have about, just over five hundred, five hundred and twenty-seven or so kids playing soccer, so we're excited to get down and build them as well. Yes, Linda?
We need to replace the clock at the swimming pool.
Okay. We'll do that.
I'm sorry.
That was cheaper than the one downtown, so we'll try to.
And we need to replace the one downtown. I just, that came from because I sat at the pool way too long. And then you know what time it was. And so I said, where's the clock? It failed. Anyway, need a new clock.
Mayor and Council, a couple things with the manuals and fire. We work with the city district a little bit. We did some training for their coaching staff, they are required to do first aid and CPRs. We've been helping them out and getting that completed before they can get on the field and coach the students. Also helped football team Friday night, after their two days, went down and sprayed in them, put the aerial up and loved them, so they loved it and they got pre-wed and cooled them off. So also with our medical calls, in July, we ran a hundred and fifty-five, so we're over a thousand calls already this year, so we're ahead of over last year. Same busy. Fire, we had forty-two calls, just such a head of over last year, so calls are staying busy in both departments. And then we have a good, a good relationship with Mountain View Hospital, Mountain Star Group, the hospitals from Utah, Salt Lake County, hosted a golf tournament for the fire fighters and EMTs and appreciate them and what they do for us. And as you've noticed, Mountain View Hospital's been working with their credations with the heart and STEMI things. Part of that is with our panels, when they get on scene and they run twelve leagues on patients, we transmit it into the hospitals so they can start that care even before we arrive, so have a good working relationship and appreciate all they do for us. So we're gonna go on.
Here you are. Mike?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank all the staff for the fine job that was done, Sam and Supper, particularly given the fact we had a rainstorm that decided to come right in the middle of the, of the celebration, but I thought they did an incredibly great job. But I thought they did an incredibly great job. Janine Dean did a good job organizing it. I was particularly pleased that the governor was willing to give my ninety-seven-year-old father two cookies instead of one. He had to talk to my dad for about five minutes to have that happen, so. But that was, that was great, and I think we had a very good celebration and appreciate all that they have done for us. The chamber is gonna be changing the billboard on the north side of town. If there's anybody that has a particular design they would like to see, they could let me know about it, but I know the chamber board's considering some design right now. Want to thank our staff for the work in front of Joe's. Any of us that walked through that area very much saw that was something that really needed to be done. And I think they've done an excellent job down there to make it look really nice downtown. I want to thank Red Huff, I know we did this last, last time, but I'm really impressed that the, both the Lions Club and Red are going to great lengths to help improve Payson and bring money from the library. I think that's a great, great project. I think the Lions Club needs to be recognized for that. Sarah, I would, I'm happy for your change, but I'm not happy you're leaving Payson, so I don't know how to react to you recording tonight. But we wish you well. That's all I have to say.
I'd just like to echo what Mike said, the salmon supper is my first time serving, it's a lot of fun, even though I got Ringo. That actually made it cooler, which was nice. But we just have so many employees who do so many great things and so many community volunteers, that it is a unique place. I don't know anyone else who serves five thousand people in any community, so that's, that's pretty impressive. So thanks to everyone who helped out with that, from fire, police, Janine, anybody who was serving. I'm kinda like Mike, I don't know how to react to Sarah leaving, she's been fantastic from the time I was a nobody to a lot of twelve people trying to get this job for some reason. And she was open to anybody that she talks to, she's willing to communicate with our citizens, and I think that's wonderful. I love the transparency and the open, honest communication. Couple other things. One, I would like to publicly apologize to Dan Ellsworth, it was a little hard on him. Last time I sat down with Dan and we had a good conversation. And I've come to understand that the agreement that's in place is problematic for him and for us. But I think he's willing to sit down and work with us as well as everyone else. And so that was a misunderstanding on my part that I would like to clarify and apologize for, but but there is some work that needs to be done on that East Side plan, and he acknowledges it, and I think we all know that. Other than that, just a small teacher thing, since we say the pledge every week. And since we mostly have staff here who can help out with this. And you don't have to say this part, so however religious or non-religious you are, but it's one nation under God, not one nation, comma, under God. One nation under God, so you can say it or you can not say it as you believe, but it's one nation under God. Sorry, school's starting on Tuesday.
That'll be baked in or what?
Well, I think it carries more meaning if you are willing to say those words, I think it is more meaningful as well if you say it right.
But don't pause?
I just want to echo what has been said also. When Brian was up there asking for who had been to so many salmon suppers, and I kept raising my hand, and he kept saying, Lynda, you can't win the prize. But anyway, from when I was an infant, because it began in my ward that I was a member of, with Ronald Lindsay. Roman Lindsay, pardon me, I'm looking at this call. Anyway, it's been something that I've done for probably over fifty-five years and have never missed one in all that time. And I so appreciate all the city employees, the fire department, everybody that works so hard. I mean, I've come down there and eaten, and all that's great fun, but you don't know what goes in to it unless you help with it. And I'm just, I'm just amazed, and we've helped before, but how much work it is for you guys, and I appreciate it. Also, with our Labor Day celebration coming up, I want you to know too how I appreciate all the work that you'll do for that. Because I think that we notice you in the park, emptying garbage, doing all of that. And it's a big deal, so I really appreciate it. And it's a good thing I can't see Sarah, because I'd probably start falling, but I think she's had to face a lot of things, and I am I am really proud of her and the work that she's done for Payson City. And I don't, whoever we get to replace her will, I'm sure, do a good job, but I for one, I'm gonna miss Sarah. Thank you.
Sarah, I don't know if you're gonna be able to leave after this. Also, I kinda feel sorry for you, Sarah, because Payson's gonna be doing great things and you're gonna miss out, so. But we are really gonna miss you, and thank you for all you've done, so. But I have to do a couple of things, one is again, equate everybody on the salmon supper, it's a great event, thank everybody that helped with that. And Sarah, did we ever get any numbers for the concert help?
Yeah, we made four hundred dollars.
Okay, well, that's great.
Covered the costs.
Covers costs in that event, so that's great, thanks. Also, Dave, on the East Side plan, have we done anything about getting a work session or?
It's scheduled for the thirty-first, we're setting those up to, we're setting those up to the people in that area. And the thought was to have our open house meeting from six to seven, and then go into that meeting with the, unless you wanna do the open house for an hour and a half, just however you wanna do it, we go six to seven, and then do the work session with the East Side people from seven to, however long, eight or eight-thirty.
So, an hour, hour and a half, or?
It's an hour and a half.
Hour and a half?
The East Side.
Two, two hours.
An hour, if you go for an hour, more people might show up. You gotta pack it in there.
You wanna do that, you wanna just have the open house for an hour and then the East Side? That's fine.
Okay. And on the East Side, were we inviting Outbridge at this time, or just the people, the people in the area?
Well, it's up to your discretion, I thought that in the last meeting, you had wanted to just meet the East Side people before we meet Outbridge.
Okay. Then Dave did bring this up, but we had a site visit from a company that's looking to come to Payson. It went really well, they were here for a day and a half, basically all day and then evening. We had some local citizens go dinner with them on Wednesday night, and then Thursday, they spent all day with the city, going over things. And if this company comes to town, they're gonna spend about three hundred million and building equipment, which would be quite a bit in property taxes, so. The city did a great job, I'd like to thank everybody, and especially Dave, for arranging that and getting this taken care of. Also, they went up to the golf course, and they just love being up to the golf course. And one thing, as a city and as a council and mayor, we need to just take advantage of that golf course in economic development, because it's a gemstone that we have, and we need to take advantage of that, so. Anyway, that's why I have things.
Oh, golf course, oh, sorry.
I'll just make this short. Anyway, I pretty much echo out what everybody said here, but thanks to Kent and Sarah.
Okay. First thing is, thanks to Kent and his crews, the streets are really looking good. Eastside Avenue really looks good, I think everybody down there loves it. And looking down in front of the fire station, that's gonna be a great thing, I think that we probably saved a few bumpers. So, yeah, I think all the way around, that's gonna be great, we got all new tie-ins and everything else. I know Jolly Joe's, we had the sewer deal a few years ago, and we had a lot of problems on there, so. I mean, it's a good thing that we got that done. And I appreciate the streets and the sewer and the water department for all they've been doing. They get in there and they get it done with the line, what is it, on fourth, going up through there. I mean, we've had a lot of, a lot of areas that we've, we've really worked hard on this year, and we, we need to be proud of what we've done. The streets especially.
They've got a lot of.
They patched and paved in front of your house. Yeah, they patched and paved in front of my house. The second, the sewer department did. I tried to get a new road out of it, but.
They patched mine, too.
Anyways, if you drive around town, you'll see a lot of the difference, and we do appreciate what they've done. If you ask me, just the overlays alone and the new streets we put in has been well worth it, and I think the citizens have noticed that more than, more than about anything between that and the park the past few years. It's, it's been very noticeable. So, we appreciate all of those guys, I know they're out there every day, and it's been the hottest, one of the hottest years we've had. And they sit out there on them pavers all day and, and working the trenches and everything else, and so. You know, it's not just the streets, it's the sewer and the water and all of them, so we appreciate what they do. As way of information to the council, the federal law returned in on strawberry, they should have us some information back on that by the end of the month, by the thirty-first. We're waiting to see what that is. There, the way they told us that we can still negotiate and mitigate some of those things down there, so. We're kinda waiting to, to work all that out. Salmon supper went off great, the governor had a good time, the governor was impressed. And I think meeting with a bunch of the regulars had come all the time. Still met up with the bus load that comes from Salt Lake, looked me up again this year, so. I call them the party bus, it's the lady has a birthday and loads up an entire bus, and that's a birthday party every year, so. Anyways, it's a great, a great celebration we got, and a lot of people from around the state, a lot of people from around the country come to that. And, and like they said, you know, you guys, the staff makes that go and, and makes it work, and so we appreciate all that's done there. Also, last week, we had our poverty simulation, and I think that that went fairly well, considering not too many came. I don't know, how do you feel about it, Dave?
I thought it was really good, we just needed more people.
Yeah. Circles is a part of the community in action, community action program that are helping families in need of financial, stuff like that. Not only do they really help them out on their, to get stuff, but they go in and train them, they train them how to get jobs, they train them how to budget, they train them how to do a lot of different things. So if anybody knows anybody that might need the, to be, have them put an application in, let me know, because they still have a few spots. And we'd really like to get the SADOM Circle program going, and that would cover the South Utah County. So, it's a good program. Lions Club, appreciate the Lions Club for all they do. I know I was down there Monday night, we have hot dogs every night, every Monday night down there. We're planning on trying to raise ten thousand dollars, which is a million pennies, to the library for the teen center. And we didn't have that many, come down and get hot dogs. So, I know that there was a few comments that a lot of people aren't really too informed about what's going on and this and that, and so. Put it out and plan on the next three, four weeks that we'll be down having hot dogs, and three fifty, you come down and get a meal, hot dog, a chip, and a drink, so.
Mayor, is it on Facebook or anything like?
Yeah. Yeah, Jennifer puts it out on Facebook all the time.
Is it on the webpage?
Uh, I think it's on PaysonLions.org.
I wondered if we could put it on the webpage, I think, like I said, I think it's a tremendous, tremendous statement, Lions Club, Payson City, and I think we ought to promote it.
We've been doing it down at the park, right in front of the park is where we're putting it, and.
What if I don't have a marquee at the wagon lot, does it all matter or not really? Anything will come, I think, I think that's the thing, is nobody knows about it themselves.
Right, and that's something we really gotta, you know, it is helping the library. And I was down there Monday night, walked over, has anybody even looked over on the side of the building and the library? It looks like a couple of braysways ready to fall right on.
In the breezeway?
In the breezeway.
Yeah.
We need some help in there.
Need some work.
Before, if we don't get that stuff all fixed, we're gonna lose that whole sign. And I think both sides of that breezeway is not looking the best, so.
Tree was overgrown in there when we were down there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need some work.
And the tile might need to be looked at down on the, on the ground. It's a neat place, I think we could do a lot of neat things in there. You know, I even think if you put a cover over that somehow, you could, you could make some neat old murals in there like, like they've done. You know, we got the one in there, and I think that that's kinda part of our downtown look. And so, we need to look at, but yeah, the side of the library definitely needs to be looked at there. And last but not least, Sarah, we do appreciate all you've done. It's a hard job to even look at the mayor and shake your fist at him and say, no, you can't do this, or no, you can't do that. And everybody on the council, and, and we appreciate all you do, and you've done, and you've you've got us right back into where we need to be and, and all of our finances there, and so we do appreciate everything, and we wish you the best of luck in your, rest of your life. So, anyways, I'd like to give her another hand.
We love you, Sarah.
And as you can tell, we're probably just putting down a whole big show to keep you here, maybe.
It's not a show.
No, it's not a show, we do appreciate all you've done, so. Again, you've helped us a lot, and it's thoroughly appreciated, we've got a lot of good employees. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the scout attendance, I'll turn that over later.
I got to do this one time since I've been in, and this is probably my very favorite. And I've been watching Spencer down there, and of course, that's one of my very favorite names, because that was my father's name. So, I want to welcome Spencer to come up. He's our, we want to recognize him for his attendance here, and you look so sharp in your scout uniform. And I want to give you that certificate for coming, okay? And shake hands with all of us.
I'll remember that now. Okay, next thing on the agenda. Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is the request for exception for permanent building requirement. I'll turn that over to Kyle.
Good evening, everybody. We had discussed in the June 15th meeting, the applicant Prominence Natural Stone is requesting an exception to the permanent building requirement. And it is in our ordinance that an exception can be granted by approval of the city council. The, the city council had asked me to, had asked staff to review a few of the items and to continue the discussion at this council meeting. One of the biggest, one of the issues that had come up in that meeting was the classification of the business. Whether or not that classification, you know, how we classify it would require a zone change to be used in that area into the I-2, which allows for heavier manufacturing and other less desirable types of businesses that are included in the appendix A in your, in my staff report, a long list of items that are, of uses that are only allowed in the I-2 zone. So, there are two classifications that this business could possibly fall under. The first one is stone, clay, and glass manufacturing. And the subsection of that is cut stone and stone products. And that is allowed in an I-2 zone only and would require a zone change in order for it to be located in that location. The second one is construction contractors and services. Subsection seven of that is masonry, stonework, tile setting, and plastering services. And that is allowed in both the I-1 and the I-2 zone. So, it would not require a zone change. It would not then trigger other allowances in the future that might not be as desirable for that area. So, that is one thing that needs to be discussed and decided upon. And the second issue is, in chapter 19A, Commercial and Industrial Development of Pace and City Ordinance, subsection 1.3, any change of use or intensity of an existing use on site, it triggers improvements in the mayhem property. And in, in that change of use, active requirements, required improvements are following. Roadway improvements along all fringe areas of public roadway to include curb, gutter, and sidewalk. We had discussed the possibility of a deferral agreement on all of those, on curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The city engineer and the city street superintendent both felt that the curb and gutter would need to be required with this approval as a change of use. But that they were willing to defer on the installation of sidewalk until further development on the site or development on the neighborhood side of curb at that moment. But they did feel that in order to manage stormwater at the end of that street, that the curb and gutter would be a requirement. The third issue was off-street parking. Currently, our ordinance 19.41, every building, every building, structure, improvement, and use shall provide permanent maintained off-street parking as specified in this chapter. According to 1947, all parking lots and parking structures shall be hard-surfaced with asphalt or concrete. The question is, is the city council willing to allow for a gravel off-street parking? If so, the ordinance would need to be changed. And staff is actually working on possibly doing some amendments or proposing some amendments to the off-street parking ordinance. As it is, if this was something the city council were comfortable with, we would include that in those, those amendments. And the city engineer, as I noted here, feels that a deferral agreement on the installation of hard-surface lot could be deferred again until further development on the site or adjacent parcels developed. It would still need to be compacted gravel in order to provide access for emergency vehicles. And they have been, the applicants have said that with the trucks that would be delivering their product, that would require that compact gravel surface anyway on the site. So, they would extend that for the parking areas within their site for employee parking. So, discussion recommended by city council is which category does the city council feel is appropriate for this business? The second one on there, will the installation of curb and gutter be required? Since, I guess the city council could waive that requirement contrary to the city engineer and the street superintendent. And will the, does the city council feel comfortable with the compacted gravel parking on, on site? And so, if you have some initial questions for me, feel free. And then I will invite the applicant up to address the council.
One of my questions, remind us what triggered this request to begin with?
They currently have a home-based occupation, Prominence Natural Stone. They're a higher-end stone contractor for higher-end homes. They have in the past done the stonework on-site in each individual home where they cut stone. They're not manufacturing stone, they're just cutting it to, to make it, you know, so they can be used on facades of homes. And they feel that, or they're at the point where they need to expand their operations and be able to actually do the stone cutting and the fabricating on an off-site location because of the demand that they can perform more and be more accomplished rather than doing each individual on, on each site.
I have a question for Kent and Travis, I guess. On the stringent requirements of SWIP, how do you prevent women, big trucks go into their gravelled yard from them tracking anything out to the road and it washing down and plugging up? Say it's even just a sump. How do you, how do you stop them from tracking mud out onto the road? Even though it's road base, but how do you, somehow, I've seen like up in Salt Lake, they have to have some kind of like a crossing garden gate so that the mud falls down before they bring it out onto the road.
Yeah, there's larger law. There's, there's gravel pads that they have for tracking. The entrance would have to be a cobble, a three-inch minus pad for such a distance and such a dimension to eliminate that, mitigate any mud tracking. Even, even with that, he would still be responsible for any tracking or cleaning or anything like that. It would be an ongoing obligation on his part as far as the SWIP and SWIP.
I mean, dry weather, I'm not worried, but winter and, and spring and...
Yeah, he'd, he'd still be covered by the SWIP program that would, there's managers take care of that. And he would be required to do that with the construction of curb and gutter.
Eric, any questions for Kyle? Is the, is the permanent restroom not on here anymore?
That was a requirement that would, it would be a requirement by the facility that we have to have...
So, they have to have a permanent restroom?
An approved port of body with on-site detention.
How does that work?
I don't know how that works, but...
I've seen a couple of them like the Silver and Spiny State just by the four, oh yeah, they're in a, one of them, seeing things, wash their hands.
Yeah, so, and just the, they would require that. As long as it's some sort of containment unit, sort of it moving up their face.
I think they just use a homeless home.
As far as Olson's greenhouse, do we consider that a permanent building as a city?
Yes, yes.
Remind me, do they have gravel out in front?
They do. They, they had come in to add an addition, had requested add an additional greenhouse. And that would have triggered all the improvements because it would have gone beyond the 20% addition. And so, that would have triggered curb and gutter at that time. And it was a permanent building they wanted to build. So, they chose not to build that addition building to save costs.
Here's my question is...
Does Kent recommend the curb and gutter then now?
Yes. So, the engineers, Travis and Kent are both recommending curb and gutter be installed at the time.
Eric, any other questions?
I think it's at the bottom.
So, that's why they thought.
Well, is this on I-1, I-2 right now?
No, it's I-1, I-1, yes. It's, it's less impactful businesses.
So, no, I guess I, what I, what worries me about this zone change? We change it to an I-2, what are we opening the doors up for? So, I guess my question is, why not allow this business in the I-1?
Yeah, and that's why...
I guess that's where I'd rather look at, I mean, my opinion. Because if we go I-2 as a zone and then they decide to move out, then what do you got?
And, and that's why I, I, I feel comfortable classifying it under either one of those. So, if the council wants to, you know, to direct in that location, you know, in that direction, you could leave it in the I-1 classification.
The problem is, if you zone it I-2, could it ring something else that you really want?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have the same concern taking it to an I-2. But I, I also have lots of concerns about the way it looks right now and not requiring, for instance, a permanent building there. I've been down that lane several times, seen rock out on the street.
That's what I was gonna say, like I've seen where those Olson trucks are turning around. I was down there and there's rocks all over.
And they, they have since moved those all onto their site out of the, that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, those are beneath the, off of road. Because we're not, it's not, it's not the Pace and City's road, it's on the storage yard.
Right, yeah, and so they, and they, and they were, they were, that was running detention and have moved those onto their property and it was planned.
Well, and I think the fact that we would require curb and gutter would make it look better also.
And, you know, and that is a requirement with changing this, you know, is capacity. It's just that natural wants to be like this. So, the decision tonight, based on that section 19841, if it can be demonstrated to the city council that permanent building is not an essential part of the business operation, then the city council can grant an exception to that permanent building. And so, that is the goal. If, if at the end of the evening or the end of this discussion, you guys feel that the applicant has demonstrated that they don't need a permanent building for their operation, then you can approve it. If not, if you feel that they did not demonstrate that they don't need one, then it would be denial. I did have a third option on there, act anticipated action, that I mistakenly left on. It doesn't say anywhere in the ordinance that. It, it just says if they demonstrate they don't need it, it can be approved. If they don't, then it's not approved. No conditions can be attached to that.
And conditional use doesn't fit in there anywhere?
Yeah, well, it doesn't. So, I will invite that candidate to explain why they feel that they don't need permanent building and then ask them some additional questions.
Hello.
Hi.
So, I, I discussed this last time. Did you, do you need me to go over that again, as to why we don't need a permanent building? Or are we good on that? Okay.
And please state your name and, and for the recording and the recorder.
Alair Unica. Chartered Home伴. A I, R E, and last name Y, O U B, and I, C D.
Thank you.
Would you say it so I could hear it? I'm sorry. Sure, Alair Unica. Unica, yeah, okay, thank you. No problem. So, Rebecca. Okay, so the, the things that we're going to be, would like to do out of that property are the same things that we have been doing at construction sites, which requires no kind of covering or building of any kind. So, I don't know if you've got specific questions for me on that, but we, I mean, the evidence would basically be that we would be out doing business without a building because we wouldn't put one out there. So, it's, it's stone and it's, you know, shaping the stone and there's no, no, anything regarding a building. There's nothing regarding a building that is required for us. We don't need an office, we don't need a showroom, we're not selling from there. We don't need phones, we don't need the shelter, we don't need anything the building would, would be needed for. So, all you've got out there is the stone? I've written, I've written down there several times and I see a lot of, I don't know. Yeah, we've got, yeah, okay. Just a couple of, you know, hydraulic snappers, some, some can saws, some, just some, some things to use. Yeah. And they're all, they're all rated for outdoors because it's an outdoor kind of thing. They don't need to be covered or... No. I did want to address really quickly on the, the trucks. That's a hu, you guys have been down there, that's a huge truck turnaround right there. They don't come on our land at all. There won't be any tracking of, of anything from our yard onto the road, so...
What about when you do your cutting with saw? I mean, as far as do you, a wet saw or?
No, it's a dry saw.
And it doesn't create a bunch of dust down there?
No, it, it's a very thin blade and it creates very little dust and it's a rock, dust is very heavy and it settles immediately, so...
Any other questions?
I have two questions, one's just an observation. So, I get that you don't need a, a building when you're out on somebody's house doing it. But my assumption is, is that you're going to this site as more of a permanent site because you're planning on doing more than one building's work there. So, the volume's going to be different than, than just getting out a house and cutting stone for one house, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the concern there is, is when you're not doing just one house, that's not apples to apples to me, that's kind of apples to oranges. Because you're, you're going to be doing a large quantity.
But it's the same work that still does not require a building. So, I don't see how volume requires a building. A building is a different thing, it's a shelter, it's a showroom, it's a sales thing, it's an office, it's all these things that we don't need.
A showroom.
It could be any of those things, but we don't need any of those things to do.
But you do need a restroom.
And we're happy to put in a restroom that meets your requirements.
And then the other question I have, this might be a Kyle question or both of you. If we're looking to change this from an I-1 to I-2, what's the difference between cut stone and stonework? And can you legally do that? Like, is that something that we can even do, call something?
Well, um...
Is there, is there a legal dictionary out there?
There's just, there, there's, out there, there's a potential uses guide for cities and city planning. And there's just categories and that's the entire definition.
And it's up to you to decide.
I was gonna say, cut stone seems pretty, and stone products seems pretty...
Well, that's why you can put it in either category.
And...
I just wonder what kind of problems we open ourselves up to if we start fudging definitions. One one seems to be a lot more clear than the other one. Does that make sense?
It does, but, and, and again, I think there's...
I don't mind...
Unfortunately, it's like a kind of chalk and gray or where, you know, it could be, and could be backed up, I guess, with facts that it falls under I-1, honestly.
Dave? On your attorney's side, we get down the road here and, you know, they get figured or whatever and it starts to generate dust. What are we, what safeguards have we got to be able to, to regulate that, I guess? There, here's Rock 4 across the street, here's the greenhouse across the street. Do these, does it create so much dust that, I'm not saying it will. What, what happens? Are they two compatible businesses? We have, are we in trouble as a city for not regulating dust control, I guess, I wonder?
I think we probably handle that through the...
TPA or?
Well, the, the deferral agreement. Because some of those things would need to be agreed sometime. And I think that's a discretion, the way Mark's done the agreements, that's a discretion of the city. You know, if we come to problems, then we can...
I just want to be covered.
There's a safeguard there.
Yeah, we can look at the, the hard surface and the things that it's causing problems. We can, we can address those. I think Mark would put that in some sort of deferral agreement. If I understand, but they're getting deferred.
They're gonna defer the sidewalk and the hard surface.
The hard surface, so if there's dust and stuff like that, then I think that...
Well, I just think it needs to be brought up. I'm not saying there is, but...
Right.
At, at some point, they decide to sell out to a bigger company and they go in there and wanna do something more. I mean, that's, I just wanna look at, protect the neighborhood down the road, that's all.
You're, you're talking more about dust from the cutting and the dust from...
The cutting of the rocks, yeah. And, and maybe it's the noise too, I don't know. I, I'm just saying, I don't, I just wanna look out for everybody around there, that's all. I, I want you there, don't get me wrong, but I'm just, if you guys decide to sell and some big company comes in and wants to do, you know... I, I'm not, I want you there, don't get me wrong, but I'm just, if you guys decide to sell and some big company comes in and wants to do, you know.
I, I appreciate very much you were just putting that, I was a citizen of the city, I appreciate that very much, I also think we have to be careful that we don't direct businesses away, because we're going too far. And saying, what if you sell, what if, I keep hearing, what if you sell, what if you leave, and what if you sell, and I appreciate that, but can we also look at right now and?
It has been, and that's what I'm looking at, but it has happened, people sold out and we've, but we've had problems, because we've had problems.
That, that's an argument, I understand your argument, but we also have to look, not now, we have to look five and ten and fifty years down the road, that's part of our obligation too.
I understand, but if you do keep this in I one, that is a great protection to you, in, in all of these things, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Couple of comments, if that's okay. And maybe it'll come and go into a question, but it looks like to me, I two, it's more, higher manufacturing, more kind of way you're doing. And might not require a building, but where you talk about contractors and services, and I one, to me, that's a, a, a business and requires a building. So if we're leaving I one, I'd be saying that's a business that needs a building to go along with that definition there. And, so I, I, I look at doing I one, but then, then if you go to I two, then we're opening it up to other things, so I just have some, I, I personally would like to have some kind of building there. I thought that'd be a huge building, but I'd like to have, so you're a permanent business there, and I want business to come, I'm all pro-business, but there's a lot of, this is not just one deviation, this is one, two, three deviations. So it's, it's kind of hard to fit, you know, make all these deviations and then try to make it fit to your business, so. I, I have a hard time not having some kind of structure there and keep it into an I one.
Okay, any other dis, items to discuss, discuss? Do we have a motion? One else?
I don't. I don't mind gravel parking and just curb guard. I just, I'm not sure about the I one to I two.
Yeah, I'm fine with gravel parking and the curb, curb gutter, but it's, it's, it's past that.
Kyle, you thought that it would be fine as an I one?
And, you know.
You and the staff?
Just, yeah, you know, just because there are those two different classifications, you know, obviously, where I feel that, you know, contractor needs building, whereas the others may not, uh, you know, depending on that classification, but, you know, it. Kind of the work that they're doing, you know, they are contractors and they are doing stonework. So, and that's why it's like, that's why I decided to bring it to you guys, because it is, I think, I think you can justify it either way, so, um, that's what I felt is the capacity.
Any other questions?
So is there a reason you don't want to put some small building with a restroom in it, hook up the sewer, or what?
So you weren't here last time, but we discussed this, because of where the location is and where the utilities are, and some issues with the, the height of utilities at the end of the street, it's going to cost us about three hundred thousand dollars just to bring utilities down the street, so no, I don't want to put a building with a bathroom.
Who gave you the estimate for I, for three hundred thousand for utilities, where'd that estimate come from?
Well, that would be contractors that we talked to that would be able to bring those in, and then we found out last time that, that we have a, a raised issue with the sewer, that as far as the, the angle on the sewer, and that was complicating things even further.
So is that mean you're gonna have to live?
Yeah.
It'd just be a small one.
But, yeah, but I don't know where the, how, how they can live, come up to three hundred thousand, I meant, the power's not that far away, if you did lift station, a small lift station, it's not. You know, so I'd, I'd like to see the numbers that come up with three hundred thousand dollars.
Utilities in that street footage, it's on, I forgot the name, it's on your south.
Right, right.
That's where, that's where Olson's is picking up, right?
Yeah.
The, the house does have electricity, the.
And they do have power on their side already.
Right, so you have power, so.
So is the house, is there, is it a center?
It's on center.
I'd rather, if I was gonna have a building, I'd rather have a center in a building with a bathroom than, than no building with a porta potty.
We don't allow centers.
Well, I, we're asking to allow a lot of other things, I'd rather save that.
But it was just, the exception says that we're to demonstrate that we do not need a building to conduct business, we do not need a building to conduct business, since we're asking for the exception.
Okay, so.
So, you wanna say something?
Well, I'd like to hear comments from grabs, um.
Well, there's no water in sewers, so you'd have to drink, you'd have to take every utility all the way from the corner where Olson's is, all the way down there. Which, I mean, not opposed to that, but it's just, that's where the cost comes in, it's not just sewer, it's PI, culinary.
Okay.
Everything.
So, in, in the agreement, I, we're all read through it all the way, but at some point, when somebody else?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think, what was in the deferral is, if, when development happens like to the east of them, then that would trigger it, and then they'd be forced to take it the rest away and, and finish putting those utilities in, and then all the other stuff that is in there, like the building and all that would trigger. You know, you could trigger it at that time.
So, to the east of them or to the west?
To the east.
To the west.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So someone develops to the east.
If someone develops to the east, we would reasonably be able to run the utilities at that point, that doesn't mean we need a building, but we are very open to when it's reasonable running those utilities, we have a great interest in this city and making things the way that they should be, we just want some common sense in this to be reasonable, so.
Craig? I think, I'm actually okay changing it to I one, with the stipulation of.
It is the I one.
They're classifying.
Classifying, yeah.
Right. Putting in, with stipulation, we put in curb gutter with deferral.
Um, yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion, we go staff recommendations, and go with the deferral agreement, allow them to continue, as long as they, they're fully aware of all the deferral agreement.
And you gotta have your, your own restroom, keep rocks off the street, it sounds like that's an address.
There any?
So is that a motion?
Now, what, what happens when, when we put any road in there, is that? Because that road will be coming down along in turn.
Yeah, but I think it's still after that.
It doesn't.
It doesn't affect you guys.
It just clips down.
So that would not affect any of that, yeah.
It clips the south end of Olson's piece that they bought, that, on the south side of the road right there, so.
Okay, so the only thing that they're worried about is if somebody puts something more Olson's.
There's Olson's lot, and then there's one more, and then they're down in the tracks.
Oh, okay, so Olson's and then one more, alright. Okay, so we've got a motion.
I guess my motion's to go with staff recommendation.
So could we repeat staff recommendations?
Um, if you felt that they, uh, made their case of why they don't need permanent building, um, and then to classify it as the construction contractors or services, um, to go with the city engineer and street superintendent's recommendation. Uh, requirements, they curb a gutter, uh, the first sidewalk, uh, to defer hard service parking, uh, with gravel instead, compatible gravels, um, would also be included.
And in that deferral agreement, what triggers, is any changes?
Yeah, any changes, any development, uh, on the adjoining parcel to the east, intensificate, a major intensification of use, you know, if they, the future doing the building, then it would also trigger, yeah, those, that, that will be addressed in the deferral.
Eddie?
So, that's, those are, that's our recommendations.
Okay, so we got a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second, we are clear on the motion, correct? Tim? You got all of that? Everybody's good as that, do we need a rule call? I know Mr. Rule Call isn't here, I wanna double check.
It is, that is to keep it, put it in the I one.
Classifying.
Keeping it in the I one, okay.
Just a moment, just a moment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye. Here, we got two, four, and three against, or be, two, three, four, and two against. So it passes. So we had Brian and Mike that voted against it, so motion carries. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, uh, we're gonna move that around to, um.
Solid waste master plan.
Yep, solid waste master plan. I'll turn that over to Kent.
Mayor and council, in, uh, eighteen, nineteen eighty-five, we had contracted with Eric's Engineering to do a, a solid waste master plan. Uh, we followed that for all these years, and, uh, twenty, May of twenty sixteen, we commissioned, uh, Advanced Environmental Engineering to do, uh, a new master plan, which, uh, is basically phase one of the master plan. To catch us up, to see where we're at with the, the fill and the volumes that were predicted, um, the document that was in your packet, um, will shed some light on, on where we're at. Uh, the whole meaning of the document was to get to, um, existing life, what do we have left, where are we going, the next, uh, the next phase of master plan would take us further. Um, I have, uh, Chet Huby with Advanced Engineering here to make a little presentation on this master plan to the mayor and council, with that I did invite him up. He'll do his presentation, answer questions from the consulting side.
Thank you, Ken, and appreciate the opportunity to work for Face the City and developing this, uh, solid waste master plan, as Kent mentioned, this is phase one. So what we were establishing is the foundation, and what we, what we were primarily focused on is what is the capacity of current landfill cells. Um, you'll notice that, uh, there are typically with a solid waste master plan, there are a whole wide variety of items that we address, such as, uh, other infrastructure, being your scales, your scale houses, uh, your maintenance facilities, um, recycling, diversion, those type of things. Um, so, with the master plan, which is probably similar to your water master plan and wastewater master plan, we look at development windows. So we take population projections, and we look at rates of, uh, waste that's generated, and then we project those volumes of waste that, that is gonna be generated down the road, and we look at how we're gonna process that. With solid waste, we typically look at closer to twenty to fifty year range. Uh, because with your permitting and things like that, it's harder, harder to get facilities permitted, um, and it's harder to locate them, land is becoming more scarce and things like that, so. With water, oftentimes, we, we look at a shorter window, but with, uh, uh, solid waste, we also live in the short window, but we're also looking at the longer picture of lives. So, you'll notice that in your class four, we have about twelve years left, in your class five, we have nineteen. Now, there are different things that we can do to, uh, look at extending the life of those cells without expanding beyond the current footprint. With different equipment, we get different densities, so as future phases, you'll look at that, and there's a cost, uh, evaluation that's, that's done with that, to select the right equipment. There's, and so you'll have an evaluation of rate of return on investment analysis on that, and so you guys can look at it as a, as a budgeting and planning tool, when we hit this threshold, we, you know, may wanna look at this type of equipment and things like that. And then, we're always looking at, uh, conversion rates and, and changes in regulations and things like that, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I know you've all read through it.
It's a long thing to read through.
Sorry.
So.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting.
So could you summarize for us, as exactly what your recommendations are, I had a little bit of difficulty reading this report to know what that was.
Well, and, and I wanna commend your staff, and the way the facility's operated, we, we look at facilities all over Utah, Idaho, Wyoming, Nevada, and, uh, it's very well organized, it's very well operated. Um, it's a, it, your, your, typically, we have to make a lot of recommendations to maximize sites and things like that, you're doing a fantastic job. Uh, as far as the recommendations go, we were mainly looking at the landfill at this time, well, with twelve years of capacity with your class four, uh, you need to start looking. Now, there are potentials for expansion up above the existing class five area, um, and so that would be the next phase, and then your class five has about nineteen years. So we need to look at, at where that next cell's going to be in regards to the class five, because we don't wanna put the class four where we're gonna put the class five. And then you also have to look at logistics and operations, so your next phase is dig a little bit deeper. And that's, you know, with each phase that you do, you dig deeper, you know, identify, you met, you, you identify where each one of those locations are gonna be, so that you can optimize your efficiency. Uh, the other thing is your scale house, uh, looking at possibly relocating that scale house, and that's another phase. Um, and the reason you would wanna do that is, uh, uh, based off of, it's more of an operational thing. Uh, you don't want your scale house too far away from your waste, because you wanna have, uh, you want employees readily available to cover all the operations and not have any great distances and things like that. And you can also have the scale house act as almost a police force, I, I don't wanna call them that, but, but they, they can help see that people are being directed in the right location, things like that, know that my operators, and that's not the case. So, and QE lengths and all that come into factor as well down the road, so.
So, where we built that, other new scale house, would, would that be beneficial to work?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, no, I think that's fantastic, and likely, in, you know, I, as we have a master plan in that next site, but my guess is, is you'd probably leave that there for the next fifteen, twenty years, and then you just relocate. The idea is you just keep relocating it, um, you know, and you gotta look at utilities, bringing utilities in and things like that, but, yes, no, that's fantastic, where, where.
So with the land outs that we have out there, about how long, if you keep putting cells in, how long would, how long can you expand in a couple of years?
Well, we did not do that for the entire area, because I know there's, uh, I can't remember how many acres now, but.
There's a lot.
We have a hundred and eighty-six residential acres, that we've had candy saying mining, uh, in preparation for natural expansion.
So it's all available?
So, it's all available.
No, I got a question for you, this, this, really, I've not built this, this study, but in two thousand and fifteen, the waste on both the class, uh, four and the total mixed waste was way down, the reason why is, are we, are somebody not using our landfill all now, or?
Well, oftentimes, you will see fluctuations in waste based off of projects, specific ways. Um, oftentimes, your construction demolition debris will fluctuate as well, and maybe you have some waste being diverted, uh, for recycling. Um, economics play a big role right now, typically, originally, we see that the waste generation is increasing because, uh, the economy not, is not as bad as it used to be. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Yeah, and that's why the chart is, it keeps increasing every year, and a big drop off in two thousand and fifteen, so I just wonder if anybody had a reason why.
You have to re, re-broad on more, less than coin and all that.
Yeah, but I, I, I think some of it is, seriously, the recycling of concrete, no, you can't, I have to wear a lot of.
Now, now they're trying to help the town, they've dropped off with some of their, they're starting to be more creative on.
Yep.
So, or, or construction.
Nah, you have your, that's all.
They made that gate pile, I mean, they disappeared. They made that gate file, I mean, they disappeared. It's extremely expensive to, you know, demolish and, and so they're getting contractors are getting more, uh, creative in, in how they handle it. We're, we're at twenty, how much for a concrete, twenty? Twenty, twenty. But you can call it over to them for about half, cause they're gonna recycle it and resell it again. There, there's a lot of weight in concrete. They're even getting out, where they're, they're pulling the rebar out of the building, uh, they're, they're getting pretty creative. Just because of drop off the hill of the old road, that's why Butler Services are gonna actually build that school. You'll look up there, some of these, there's a file, let's see.
So we have estimated costs for adding cells? Like, we got a twelve-year on Class Four, which means we need to start planning, do we know how much it's gonna cost roughly?
The beauty that you have right now is it's just earthwork, and you've already started to excavate some of that material, uh, that's above the landfill, and you're selling that material at revenue right now. Um, so I do not have a cost for you, sorry, that's a long way around the answer, but right now, you are preparing for that next cell and actually hopefully creating some revenue.
And do they need liners, the new cells?
That's my question.
Um, that's, I don't know if you're gonna be required to have a liner and off for that next, right now, you're not. Uh, now, regulations are changing. Uh, there was a big push that got, that got canceled, oh, about, well, within the last year, they were gonna have all C and D, that's your Class Four, all C and D was gonna have to be lined. Well, the assumption there was all your Class Fives and Class Ones were already lined. Um, that's not necessarily the case in Utah, um, and some of the other states that we, we work in. A lot, the advantage that we have in Utah is our climate. Um, most of the landfills in Idaho that we work with leak, most of the landfills in Wyoming leak, and they're all under remediation. And so you're talking millions of dollars a year in remediation. We just don't have the climate, we don't have enough water. Um, so at some point, at some point, you may wanna consider liners and stuff like that, but you also have a unique geology in that you have, uh, high clay content in some of that area as well. So it, it actually slows the water from going down through it.
Well, isn't like our, our clay content out there is like what they use for the canal, isn't it?
Yeah, just holds it from...
Yeah, it holds, yeah.
And so as long as we stay in that clay and don't get the gravel, we'll line. We take those gravel down and sell them, but we need our landfill lined with that clay.
Okay, one of the main purposes for this study was to find out timeline, how many years we have left, we encompass that. We ever as little for you about that, but we had the next part is, is to try to get a new cell entirely, something, because we just need to look at the future. And I'm, maybe, maybe not, after what I'm hearing, Iowa stopped the state from gonna make us line a new cell. We have to go through that process, permitting process, which is quite lengthy and...
How, how long is it?
Oh, it's, it's absolutely a great idea from a long-term liability perspective, but also realize you have an unlined cell right there. Uh, so you already have liability. Um, but...
So we put more liability on the...
That's something that we need to look at, and look at, and stuff like that, because sometimes you're talking that groundwater will move in the order of one to two feet a year. Okay, if you're one to two feet a year, and say you have to go down a hundred feet, you know, and there's, yeah, I mean, sometimes you can be in orders of thousands of years, or five hundred years from now. And, you know, so it's, it's an evaluation that, that can be discussed, you know, and it's probably a discussion topic. These liners are very expensive. Your prob, my guess, I mean, we're doing one right now that's, uh, probably four or five acres, and it's gonna be a million plus. So it's very expensive. And so...
Jump change, bro.
Well, but you have, you have... But you just have to plan on it.
Yeah, and you don't plan on it, I think, you thought, bottom line, your responsibility is to protect the public.
Right.
And so that's some, that's a good question, that's something that needs to be...
I guess the only guy worried about is that tonne hill, and so that's gonna go down and...
It's in a recharge area.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's something that we can look at and help you out with, down the road. Um, and then funding, we can also look at funding and things like that. The big thing is you don't want to look at and say, well, in two years, we gotta build a cell. You need to look at and say, in five years, when you need to buy, uh, build a cell, and you need to start that funding then, or then. Because then you can, you can, oftentimes, you can get some grant funds and things like that to help you out. But if it's the last minute, you're less likely to get those fundings.
That's something we need to go over with the next council and mayor, make sure it keeps going.
Well, and that's part of this document. I mean, it, it kind of, it's, it's a good foundation, it starts talking about those priorities and a five-year window of law. And, and so, so it's not for that.
Okay, so do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, we want that resolution, that adopted plan, so move.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a, wait, what are we adopting? Councilman Phillips?
Yes. Resolution adopting integrated solid waste master plan. Hold on a second.
So that we, we have, we have just saying what we're adopting this plan. Okay?
So, there's no, really no money.
Right.
We need a plan to get us, just a...
Well, we, okay, so we can look at lots of different options, even though we adopt this.
Right.
It's just something we're putting liner in it, just saying we need to look, saying we're gonna look at figuring out what we're gonna...
Okay, there's a... Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Phillips, second by Councilman Hewitt. Read that. All right, Paul, let's go roll call and make sure that Mark is happy with this one. Scott?
Aye.
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 Okay, she carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
All right, next thing is a resolution on, uh, personnel policy regarding vehicle allowance, and I'll turn that over to you. Hurry, cause I don't wanna vote on that.
That was a long one for you, yeah. It may sound pretty awesome. Did that actually really make you nervous? Yes, it did. At that time, the council wanted to take more information and look at whole policy instead of just adding, uh, a couple of parts that would be proposed. So went back and looked, there's a, we're gonna put up a spreadsheet that we have, uh, my intern worked on this last time, we discussed car allowance seven years ago. Got with Sarah, we looked at formulas and updated the assumptions and the numbers. We just wanted to put that out there, cause I know the discussion last time was, maybe we could do a way for car allowance, just go with this short, you know, this lease program that, that we have. Found a little more information on that, I'll just put up the numbers, and you can look at it, and I'll, I'll give you some of my concerns about this lease program, and then, you know, you guys can discuss it, or I'll give you a recommendation that... Why should, your cost be so... It looks like it's coming out of postcard. There it goes.
Ellen resolution.
With that, oh, it's just...
Isn't it?
We're on, yeah, we're on D, D two?
D two.
Oh.
You're, you're... Yeah, so you wanna be out of here.
I was way out of here. We'll hurry on this. So this is kind of the, the table that we have, and this shows, this is what our current car allowance amount is. This is what it costs the city. Um, here's the IRS rate of if you just had people turning for mileage at the, the current rate. And so if you don't drive many miles, it's cheaper for the city, just have it turned in. If you drive over more miles, it becomes, uh, cheaper to have the car allowance. Now, these two, this line here is if we purchased, if the city were to purchase vehicles. And for the most part, it's cheaper for the car allowance than to purchase the vehicles for most of the mileage, unless it's very few miles that you use during the month. This one is the lease, which gets down to where, you know, the lease might be cheaper than the car allowance, up to a certain amount of, of miles per month. And that's using the new numbers, um, let me go over that. I'll show you some of the assumptions we made. And we, we updated this from what was done. So right, right here, the vehicle allowance is five fifty, the IRS minus rate reimbursements, fifty-four cents. We, we have the price of gas at three dollars, it's a little bit cheaper right now. Um, this lease program that we're talking about would be diesel engines, so it's a little more expensive than the regular gas. Uh, the estimated cost of insurance per month, we, we verified this amount, this amount was more, uh, in our previous discussion a few years ago, that our, the insurance company, the trust, uh, gave us what the amount would be for a typical vehicle, and breaking that up monthly, it's about thirty dollars a month. Estimated miles per gallon, this is what changed quite a bit, is the lease price if we, the, the... This program with, uh, horsepower fleet services is a, a one-year lease for, for two thousand dollars. If you break that up monthly, it's a hundred sixty-seven dollars a month, twelve-month lease. Um, there's a mileage, Brad indicated the mileage limit on that lease is thirty-six thousand miles, which is a lot for one year. Um, we did an average cost of truck or car, if we were to purchase it on the state bid. It's just an average, trucks maybe a little bit more than that, cars a little bit less. But we put twenty-five thousand, estimated sellback, the life and months of a car and an average cost of maintenance per month. So these are some of the assumptions, they can change a little bit.
Dave, I have one question on miles per gallon, or so you're saying every one of these is a truck? And I'm guessing miles per gallon, even diesel trucks get better than that. And if you got cars, you're...
Fourteen to fifteen is on the trucks, the, the cars might get more. I, I'll talk about the lease in a minute, cause that's one of my concerns here.
And the lease is whatever they have. I mean, you only get picked between a certain few.
Right. The, the lease, the lease information for this, this company, the, the one for two thousand dollars annual lease payment, which makes this number here, the one sixty-seven, uh, and that's what makes this, if you look at the table here, that's what makes this, uh, lease to where it could be cheaper than the car allowance, unless you, unless you're driving over about thirteen hundred miles a month. Uh, in the past, both the sale and the lease were up here more, it just, it, it's cheaper for the city to do the car allowance overall, unless you drove very few miles and just had people reimburse through the IRS. But with that new lease option, that brought it down quite a bit, so it, it is an option that we can look at. Through this company, the only, the only vehicles you can rent for two thousand dollars annually are, there's two of them. There's a, there's a Ram, three-quarter ton Ram, Laramie, uh, diesel, four-by-four, mega cab, short bed, Cummins diesel engine. It's got bells and whistles. And the other is a Ford F-two-fifty Lariat, same thing, crew cab, four-by-four. And, um... And, and, and my, my opinion is, those are the ones they can resell after a year for, to get their money back. Um, some, some of those vehicles wouldn't work with some of what we need. Um, the other vehicles on their program, you could get a Chevy Tahoe, but that's thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, a year, which is still a, a good lease price. Um, a Ford F-one-fifty is four thousand a year, and you get up to, you know, if you wanna get a, a Dodge Charger.
They don't have any of this little economic cards, eh?
They, that's what they got on their list, there's a Jeep Grand Cherokee that's thirty-five hundred. So...
So would that mean all of our police cars are gonna have to go, if we went to them, they don't have to drive?
That, they're not, they're not doing the, they're not doing the fleet. We're just doing the trucks, we're not doing the SUVs.
You're not gonna do the SUVs anymore?
No. Well, I don't think... No, we are, we're not gonna do SUVs. Yeah, this company does not do the, do the police package for the replacement of most of the vehicles. So we're just trying it on a couple of the trucks.
Well, yeah, that's what I was, cause I thought that was what we were doing at the original, we were going through that.
No, we were just gonna do the six trucks right from the beginning, because we pay about, uh, five grand a year for the lease on those, and this goes down to two, that's why we switched.
So you're going from an F-one-fifty to a F-two-fifty, that half the cost.
For what, mayor?
For the lease.
Half the cost, you say?
For half the cost, well, I don't know about half, it's a thousand dollars, but you're still gonna pay more in gas.
And, and, and some that are on this vehicle allowance, it might be great to just get this lease. I'll just, I'll just tell you my concern that I'll, I'll put up for discussion. So if you look at these assumptions, this is a fairly new company that we haven't heard of much. Brad's trying it with a couple of vehicles, we haven't had him delivered yet. But I'm concerned that this is maybe a price that each of command abuse for a company. Um, if, if it, if we get, if we tie in and say, okay, we'll get rid of the vehicle allowance, and then next year, they say, okay, now the price is getting up to three thousand. Even if you move it up to three thousand, I'll just change this price of the lease to, to three thousand, this is thirty-five hundred that was in here. But if, even if you change it to three thousand, you go back to the table, and it's still, for the most part, it's cheaper to do the car allowance than the vehicle lease. And so it's, it's a concern that we're gonna try something that's really not proven on this lease. It might be a great program, but if you change it, and then next year, it goes up, and then we say, well, do we go back to the car allowance? Now we've told everybody to...
I'd still say for like this art and water and all that, that'd be the way to go. You can't get a Chevy Colorado or something, they don't have any of them for a lease, seriously.
They won't do nothing but stuff that is, I know... They know they're gonna be able to sell again.
How, how does that work, like if you send it out, say, on the store department, or whatever, and they get a ding in it? Is that all, you're fixing to pay, you're paying to fix all of that?
The same as any other vehicle? That, that, you know, some of, some of the, some of the vehicle allowance probably would get deemed up very much, some of them might. And so to me, it's just a little bit of an unknown, so that's, that's, that's my main concern, is we, we look at, yeah, this is a great lease, and it drops it down where it's cheaper, but if it's gonna change next year, or, you know, I, I guess, if I throw out my recommendation, it'd be, let's, let's see how Brad does with the, with the lease program company. If it works out well, it seems to be a legit program, then we'll start leaning people off and, and, and change it, but...
Well, we can always drop that to the other lease, can't we? As far as like Brad's...
Yeah, but the other lease is about six thousand a year, so that would put the lease price up.
But I mean, we can change over this year and get rid of all the trucks, and change to the other trucks, and then...
I wouldn't wanna, can't just buy the truck, you can't just go cut it off now.
No, I'm, I'm just saying Brad right now, I mean, he's got six trucks. So if we take them and change them over, even if, if that goes up next year, he can go back to the other, cause we're still keeping the SUVs on the other lease.
Yeah, they're still saying, I mean, the police are doing it, that's...
So you're saving money on something else for one year, through his...
No, and they are doing it, it's, I'm just talking about those that are on the car allowance. If we're gonna say, let's get rid of the car allowance and go to these leased vehicles, I'm a little concerned about that, but... Because you look at these variables, anything that changes, it just moves it up. If you look at this for the most part, the car allowance, if you take the insurance and everything else, it's, it's a better value for the city than buying a fleet of vehicles. Some of the other concerns, if we go to the lease, where do you keep all the vehicles? Do you put them at a lorry shop if, if Mark, if Mark...
We've got Mark Hyland that to me drives the little...
Why not? If Mark, he can't take it home, so if, you know, it's a city car, so every time he gets called out or something to the golf course, he drives his own vehicle down to lorry shop, picks up the city car, and then goes up to the, the thing. That's some of the concerns of, of having, having a, a vehicle assigned to you on your, not your car.
How does that work with the police department? They're all on the lease, and they'll take them home?
It depends on their public safety.
Yep, they, they...
There's special exceptions for public safety vehicles.
Yeah.
You mean that isn't an all-around deal for city employees, and you can't...
If you're, if you're on call, you can take it home, but otherwise, you have to keep...
Okay, so Travis is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Okay, so Travis is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Well.
Where, where can? Well, I mean, technically, I mean, but really, if any of these superintendents, if they're on. I mean, what do we do, I know myself and, and Scott, we call them weekends, nights, whatever, if you have water, or you have a sewer break, or whatever.
Dave, I.
I don't have a problem calling Travis.
Dave. Dave, I have a couple of questions for you, one is, with the car allowance, I think what we're, the proposal was, is to have the basic car allowance, and then if you drive more miles and going farther distance, so that car allowance might be going up too, right?
If, if we change the rules.
Right. The other thing is, um, one of the things I think with leases, I know some of them use their vehicles all the time, it wouldn't work for them, but some of them, the, the department heads are in this office that you might know, might only need three vehicles for five people, so that would change this equation somewhat, if everybody didn't have their own. You got a little carpool and have them right here, and that, to me, would make a difference, we have, but it'd be on a case-by-case basis, it wouldn't be, some of them just don't need them all the time, and then, and so, anyway, that's where I can see saving some more money too, but it's something we'll think about.
So we're not on a, Travis stays there all the time?
How many vehicles are we talking?
I think there's twelve that have some sort of a, a car allowance, some of them just have a partial, they're probably can have full car allowance.
Well, I'd say like Kent, all them, they can't. I mean, they're not working all the time in the, you know, getting things and stuff.
Scott brought up the one issue, that I haven't talked to each, each person that's on the car allowance, because if somebody's into a lease payment or a car payment that uses that, you know, do we just phase it out until they've done, and then do away with it? And, and go to one of the leases, so those are some of the things we have to take in.
I think we need to address it. See how close Brad, check it out next year.
We're happy to keep an eye on it, see what changes, I, I, I'd really be interested in that.
I would like to, maybe, could we address it maybe before budget year next year?
I could address it now.
It's a part of the budget. Yeah, well, at least look at it, I'm not saying we're changing anything, but at least look at it.
No, we can bring it up.
Put it on radar, so we don't forget it.
I've had other cities, uh, email, shout out to all the city managers, have they ever heard of this company, because their prices seem too good to be true. And so a lot of cities are really looking at it for being cautious, and so with Brad doing this, it'd be great, if it works, great. I don't know how you can lose, well, let's, keep an eye on it, see what happens.
And Dave, can you figure out how I can lease one of those?
I already asked.
Yeah, you already asked, sorry.
Can't that be part of employee perks or something?
My dad, I want a tackle.
Don't know how long you wanna go to jail, you can do whatever you want.
And I tell you.
I paid the, I paid the payment.
My own thought is, because I think when you work for government, they can get the government rate for these trucks, so they pay less, and then they make more money after the, the year, but if it's private, they can't get the government rate, so. Anyway, I just wanted to throw it out, we can look at it, anytime you wanna bring it back up.
I'd just say, let's look at, look, I mean, unless everybody's in a hurry, let's look out before our next budget year.
Yeah, March, see, see where we're at in March, if you wanna do the same thing as far as the proposal changed last time of, if you go so far, allowing to be reimbursed for additional miles, we, we had that because of, um, going down to Vegas and going down to, and I'm, we're happy if tax is okay with allowing, put in, right now, we don't have, and it's, you know, the other thing is, we could.
I'm sure when, when we do Long Island State, or I sure would love to see carpooling.
Yeah.
As we can, instead of one person in each car, just because they can, I'd rather see carpooling, I guess.
As you were paying extra, that, that, there's no one, there's no incentive to carpool.
Dave, who, who prepared the analysis here, was that Sarah or?
Well, this was originally done with the formulas by, I don't know if you remember, Kyle or Ludwig, he was an intern of ours. But I did give Sarah the, because she's an Excel person, verified the, the formulas and different things like that.
Could we require that Sarah stay until next year?
No, we may work on that for quite a while.
And then do this for us?
I'd love it, see it happen. Anyway, we'll, if you're okay, we'll just, we'll bring it up to the next budget session.
And I had a recommendation of that, increase the mayor's, uh, cuff minis allowance to three, at least three hundred, so.
And I can bring it up for you to pass that resolution we have.
I'm just glad you brought it back.
We could put it on the consent agenda, or if you wanna discuss it more, but.
Do it, I think I agree with him, I think with Councilman Hewlett, I think we need to increase the mayor's allowance.
We'll, we'll put something together for your, for consent agenda.
Okay, so we need a motion on this?
Nope.
Dave? Okay, next thing is the discussion on, uh, the digital sign, regarding digital sign, and that's Dave.
We can go pretty quick on this, but one of the things that I thought we better get back to front of you is Councilman Wealthy here, a couple of meetings back, said, you know, I don't know that the onion can get taken out, and maybe we, the city council needs to choose the designs, we can kind of move forward, but this was what we, we did take the onion out of the paste in there, because we thought we could use the logo on the digital part, but this is what was, uh.
Let me just tell you something before we get too far, the problem is, you get another mayor, it changes something else.
That, that's one of the, that's one of the concerns.
That's a true story.
Well.
Because we've had three mayors with three different logos in the last.
Yeah.
Three.
So that's why I was concerned, put it in the actual sign, but, you know, you can always put the logo up in the, the digital part.
Yes, you put up the digital part, it's not as much of a problem, I just, there's been a lot of talk about branding.
Yep.
And, and who we are, and we've got pace and onion days, and, you know, part of me says, well, maybe we need to change this for the onion days, who's grown onions in the last forty years? Right? But if, but if we're, well, I understand that, but because of that, and people are gonna throw a fit if we change that, and the onion.
Six people, raise council after council, good luck.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, is because people are so tied to that, then you gotta keep the onion there, and brand is, it's the main layers.
Yeah. We can all be tied to it, but the next council might not be tied to this thing.
No, I agree, I understand irresponsible choice of them to.
I understand other signs, because they change the, maybe we're.
If I have, if I have my way, I'm eliminating fireworks.
I'm gonna launch it to your house.
Well, I, I have to agree, uh.
I'm eliminate.
My wife would eliminate them too, they're, they're my house, like.
There's a house.
But, uh, I, I think, I think we need to keep the, the logo off the sign.
So this was the original design after we took the logo off, and we didn't really tell him to put the, the, the brick pole, probably the escape pole, but that's kind of the design. There was a bit on that with the sixteen-millimeter sign, I think that was forty-eight, I, I got it here when you showed up, but we staff looked at it, maybe there's something better if we look downtown, because it's historic downtown, so we, we did do another rendering that most of the staff liked, but again, if you guys like one way or the other, we can do the one that. This was the one that we kind of came up with, and we sent it to Freedom LED, we also sent it to Yes Code, to their bid, and, and, uh, so this is kind of what we came up with, and, uh, he redesigned, it's a little, it's a little bit more expensive than the other one, because there's a little more intricate stuff up on the history. But, so when we got it, when we got it back to two, when we got it back with that.
Can you mix the two, because I like the big pace, and but I like the artistic nature of that one. Like, we are pace, and welcome to pace, it's kind of like the golf course, people don't notice that we're going to Pace's Golf Course.
I have suggestions. That would be a base right there, is a good place for people to hang all kinds of crap and.
We're not, we're not suggesting that.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be more of a.
It'll be more of the other with the small pole, or, but. We put historic downtown, if you wanna put Pace City, or Pace Downtown, or, or Pace, that, that's why, after your comment, Doug, I just thought, maybe this council ought to weigh in before we move forward. And then the other thing I wanted to throw out is just because we, we, the council appropriated the thirty, we had the twenty from the grant, so that's fifty. But you're looking at the sixteen-millimeter, and you're, you're, you're anyway, from the old one, it's forty-eight or forty-nine up to fifty-three. And so we're about three thousand dollars over, but part of this is that we would need to do some of the work, the cement work, combine the pole. So we're, we're short to be able to do this, to the two, about seven or eight thousand dollars over the fifty. So I wanted, I didn't wanna spend anything over unless you guys were aware and weighing on it.
That's for both of them, or are they, are they both gonna be about the same price?
They're both, yeah. I talked about going to a lesser, uh, nineteen-millimeter instead of the sixteen-millimeter, it's not quite as clear, but up there, but he said, you know, you're only gonna save about twenty-four hundred dollars. And so he suggested the sixteen-millimeter, that's kind of the standard right now. They're coming out with some ten-millimeter, which is a lot more nice, but they're a lot more expensive now. So this, the sixteen-millimeter is this, the same kind that Anderson Dell has, there's the sixteen-millimeter.
Well, I, I, as much as. Dave?
Yeah?
As much as I love historic downtown, and I'd like to have something going into that, I, I would go for pace and.
So, so do you like the, the, the black type sign more, that you want pace up the top?
Yeah, once they're, basically, they're like, but you need.
You need something more up there, that's the whole thing.
Keep in mind that if you do put historic downtown, that that sign may be moved, depending on the.
I'd just stick with pace.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think, just in case it ends up on eight south somewhere.
Nine out of ten, he wants no idea what historic downtown means, that come in from downtown.
Just put pace on up there.
Pace instead of historic downtown.
Yeah, I, I love the historic downtown, but I think it ought to be, pace ought to be one up there, I think so.
But you gotta look on the advertising, and that's what you're doing, if you're advertising, you're down.
As far as, as far as the extra money's concerned, let's get it done.
Get it up.
We, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment.
That's fine, I might have to leave Sarah back. I think that's a requirement, because all the stuff, we're waiting to reconcile this year's budget, but we were, we were gonna carry over the things we needed to on the next budget amendment, this would have to be part of it.
But we do have to spend that grant money and be reimbursed before October, so we need to get started, so we can.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I didn't wanna go over.
You need a seven, eight, nine thousand dollars? You need a motion on that, what do you need?
There's directions with it. Directions getting up, because you're gonna have to do a budget amendment change, and I just wanted to be aware, just get a cost formula.
Let's do direction and get a budget amendment in here, since we can.
One last question, so do you like that design better, or do you just want pace on the top?
Right.
I'll have, I'll have.
You can do a big bowl of pace.
Does it have to be a little bit big?
That, what you got there, it doesn't even show up, I, I don't even.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be as big as the first one, but it needs to be big enough to read, like, I can't.
You can't even tell what that other one is.
You'll beat that historic downtown.
Hey.
No, they're gonna be looking at.
A little bit bigger with pace.
What's that?
I says, they'll be looking at the content on the sign.
Well, it might be, but if your sign's down.
Yeah.
Then how you got nothing?
I'd say either I could go pace and big, to say pace, and, or they're gonna look at the content on the sign, you don't ever go to a billboard, and you're looking at the stuff on the billboard.
Except they notice Nike swoosh on all of your shirts that you wear.
Yeah.
You know it says USA on it.
Hey, speaking of apples and oranges.
There you go.
Okay, so do you, do you like that size of pace up there, because we can go back to this design.
It doesn't have to be as big as pace, just make it bigger.
Maybe somewhere between the two, the historic downtown. Hey, we'll put pace on there, and we'll just get moving on.
Good. Does that mean we cut down the trees soon, so we don't decorate them?
I, I was told today those trees had to be down before Christmas, or else Tracy would have to put that.
Yeah, because I spouted off my big mouth and said I put Christmas lights on, so I said, we better cut those down before Christmas.
I think you donated Dave to help.
Hey, me and Dave, that'll only take us a year to get that sound.
Yeah, you can't even show up to a luncheon, so it'll probably take.
Was there a luncheon?
Yeah. Lita and I did have a company come down, and they had some ideas, maybe beefing up our Christmas lights a little, I did get a bit from off board at all, I remember we talked about it now, but we probably, I don't know if we can do it all, but they had some suggestions of refurbishing our candy canes that we've had, we've got all the, the metal.
The banners we looked at a couple of years ago, we're going up eight.
Yeah, we, we.
We're gonna do that.
We didn't ever order.
Because the only place we do anything for Christmas is down Main Street, I mean, and now you look at, oh, eight, that's one of our main, for me, it's one of our main jobs, and, I mean, you get your temple and everything else, you need that.
I'd love to, nine thirty would be cool, too.
Down there?
But, yes, we don't have.
Down there?
That'd be cool.
I, I.
That'd be cool.
But I still think you need something.
Eight south, other banners.
Well, what do you do, more on Main Street, I think you need to put something down there.
Let me, let me send you what they put, might as well. Well, I'll send it to you, and we can.
The what?
The X in a row, the X that went across Main Street there, on U five. Okay, we have a luncheon soon, turn, now into.
We can go to the diner, find out where.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll give it two minutes. We're gonna put you to wear out.